We're running a little late tonight. We had some electronic problem as well as missing a council member. And we're going to start, if the council is okay with it, we didn't have it on our agenda for tonight, but we're looking at a possibility of getting a kite, the kite fight, kite flight, isn't that what it's called? Event, a little report on that. I had started asking for these reports last time. Is that okay with council? We can go ahead with that? Thank you. Margie Seifer. Do you want to come right here and chat with us?
I would be happy to. I wanted to thank council for your support with your sponsor donation as well as city services to allow us to put on what we think is just a terrific little event for young families in our city. Little did we know, in fact, we were reminiscing, a few of us from the kite festival, little did we know, three years ago when we started this, that our average client is this tall. And it's just, it's just young families, lots and lots of our youngest members of our community. And as you all know, last year was our first year to partner with the Wheat Ridge Police Department, and it's just a perfect, it's a perfect match. And we, we just love working with, with Steve Berkowitz and Brian Wilkinson. Excuse me, I'm going brain dead. But anyway, it's just, it's a wonderful relationship, and it will be held, the flyer that you have in front of you, by the way, is going out to eight, 1,800 of these are going to schools, to the kids for their backpacks to take home with them. And so you'll notice that it's in, in English on one side, and Spanish on the other side. And then 150 window posters will be going into stores, and you're welcome to have that. Right off the press, no one else has one, that's yours. This will be going into 150 businesses, and of course, the city of Wheat Ridge has logos on there. And, you know, we've pretty much settled in. This is our third year. The third year is definitely a charm. You've heard that before. We think now that it'll just, every year, just grow in attendance. We actually, if the weather's good, expect another 500 to 800 attendees, because last year, it was pretty scary. There was just rain going on all around us the whole day, and we just thought we were going to get rained out. And we had a lot of people come really early. So if the weather is good, we should be in great shape. And the newest event that we have going on is Vern's Mini Train. Is, a lot of you may have seen it at little kids festivals, but it's for the pint-sized set. And it'll be in the west parking lot, excuse me, the south parking lot, the west end, and it'll be running continuously all day long for little bit of kids. So, thank you for everything. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. But, oh, I want to say one thing to you. This is a political announcement for all of you. When you come to the park, would you come to the MC booth and let us know you're there? We have two MCs. They'll be sharing the microphone throughout the day, and that's Ron Benson and Tracy Langworthy. And if you'll just come up and say, let us know that you're there, let them know that you're there. And if you wanted, then they'll introduce you. And if you want to say a word or two, you know, thanks, everybody for coming out. I'm Kristy Davis from District Number, help me, two, thank you. And thanks for everybody, for, you know, whatever you would want to say. We'd love for you to do that. Because I see you walking around, and we want to get you on the mic, if at all possible. So, thank you, City Council.
We can bring our kites, right?
Pardon?
We can bring our kites?
Oh, yes. And there will be, you know, in case you really, in case you really are worried about, you know, or maybe you feel really lucky, the city is once again giving away 15 kites on drawing, starting at 11:30. It'll be every 30 minutes. And, you know, we, here's the thing, George, you come down there, we will get a kite in your hand. We will just grab one away from a little kid and put it in your hand, okay?
I have some high-performance kites. I'll bring mine and...
Please, you know, we take pictures and post those to our website, by the way. Yes. The Wheat Ridge Police Department will be doing the car seat inspections again? Yes.
Could this be emailed in electronic form?
Yes, I think, yes, I think I have it from the printer in electronic form. But also, I'm getting from the printer, this great big window poster.
Okay.
Which would you prefer?
Just something that can be put easily onto social media?
In where?
Social media, like Facebook or something.
Okay, all right. I can do that. Yes.
However, I don't know what form it is.
Yours, the one I send you, will be in full color. We just print these by the thousands.
If I could just interject and correct something. The Wheat Ridge Fire Department has trained inspectors, and they'll be there to do the inspections. The police department's gotten a grant through CDOT, and we'll be there as well to assist them in managing all of the, I mean, we give away around, anywhere from 70 to 100 car seats a year at this event. So, and we'll have some CDOT folks there, too, I believe, so. Yes, yeah, yeah. It's a good collaborative event. There's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces to this.
My pleasure. I skipped right over citizen comment on agenda items, and I didn't think we had anybody up, but Margie, but did I, did you sign up back there? And would you like to make your citizen comment now? Yeah, why don't you do that?
Good evening. Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm addressing Agenda Item Three. I want to thank council members Wood and Pond for bringing forward the discussion about stormwater utility and other revenue enhancements, and thank council for being willing to consider that conversation, and thank staff for an incredibly detailed and thorough memo that, quite frankly, is pretty alarming, and I think might, should be required reading for our citizens as we look to the future of the needs in this community. As many of you know from your involvement in the National League of Cities, cities across the United States, and in fact, the world, are looking at issues of resiliency. How we maintain infrastructure and other needs that respond to a changing climate, to continued extreme weather events. I know that we might think that stormwater events that have impacted our community caused property damage and brought to our attention the need for infrastructure improvements might seem like the occasional thing, but I think that we should expect more. And I think that we should expect that our infrastructure at large, and particularly our stormwater utilities, need to be brought current, need to be addressed in a way that we simply don't have the funds to address without something like a stormwater utility. So I would encourage council to direct staff to look again at the task force recommendations, to reprioritize them as necessary, and to find a way to fund them. And I personally encourage you to enact a stormwater utility. You can do this as council. This is not a tax, it's a fee, and it's something that I know many citizens would be willing to contribute to on a monthly basis. It's a small amount to ask that we protect our city from stormwater damage, that we find a way to comply with the Clean Water Act. It's important stuff. We can do this. We've neglected it, and we've discussed it since, you know, we're approaching our 50-year anniversary in a couple of years, and these are issues that we inherited, haven't done anything about. We've been talking about since 2004. Here we are, fast forward 12 years, and we've done nothing. And it's time to do something. So I encourage you to move this conversation forward. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I don't believe we had anyone else who wished to speak. Chief Brennan, I believe it's time for item number two.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor and Council. Just a real brief introduction and a brief overview. We've got with us tonight Brian Wilkinson. He is the main partner and director of Revolution Advisors. Revolution Advisors was hired by the Jefferson County Emergency Communications Authority, also known as the 911 Authority, to do the second of two consulting studies on the feasibility of regionalizing our 9/11 service centers. Both our primary service centers, those are generally operated by police departments, as well as secondary centers that are operated by three of the fire protection districts in Jefferson County. Most of you know, this has been a work in project, work in progress since 2009. We've advised council on several occasions of the status of this particular effort to regionalize comp centers. And I'm particularly pleased tonight to have Brian here walk you through the, what in essence is the intergovernmental agreement for a regional center that will handle 911 emergency calls for the communities of Arvada, Golden, Wheat Ridge, Lakewood, and Arvada Fire Protection District, West Metro Fire Protection District, and Evergreen, as well as do contract dispatching services potentially for Mountain View Lakeside, Edgewater, and over 10 of the inner mountain fire departments up in Jefferson County. So, with no further ado, I'm going to have, ask Brian to go ahead and do a presentation. And Brian will walk you through how we got to where we're at today, and what the costs for this center are going to look like, and potential savings that we may have. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, first, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come back before you and talk about the progress that we've made on the regional 911 center. The name of the center, as you'll see throughout the presentation, is JeffCom, for probably obvious reasons. But we are looking at really regionalizing and consolidating these services. What I'm going to walk you through is a little bit of background, as well as a lot around the current state, and as Chief Brennan said, what's currently in the intergovernmental agreement that's being sent to the various jurisdictions for approval. If you look back at why we started this project, and what we were trying to achieve through it, a lot of the things are things that Chief Brennan mentioned, or that you might have heard before. It really starts and ends with, how do we enhance 911 services and emergency services to the communities that would be working with this 911 center? If you look around the country, regionalization has been a trend across the country. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But we've really looked at ways to create additional collaboration, better resource utilization, faster response times. Those are the kinds of things that we really were trying to study and understand. Could a regional 911 center in Jefferson County accomplish those things? The concept of regionalization is not something that's new. If you look over the past 20 years in particular, there's been a lot of consolidations that have resulted. There's been a number of very large centers that have actually been consolidated and operating for more than 20 years. If you look across the country, the trend has come to a point where there's actually legislative mandates in a couple of states already that require this type of consolidation. Indiana is about to open their, their final consolidation, the last county to consolidate. And Utah has also passed legislation to require consolidation of 911 centers at the, at the county level. Without getting too deep into the technology behind 911 centers, part of the reason behind that is that technology continues to advance, and it becomes more and more difficult, more and more expensive, to sort of keep up with that technology. Something as simple as cell phones, and the changes that they've required from 911, if you look in the Utah case, for example, that legislation was actually driven by challenges that the 911 system has, actually locating someone who's on a cellphone, and unfortunately, someone who died as a result of not being able to get emergency services in time. You may have heard terms like next-gen 911, or text-to-911, or things of that nature. The technology in this space is advancing very fast, and it makes it very difficult for agencies to keep up with it on an individual basis, which is another reason why regionalization makes sense. But if you look at the trend, you can see here a quote from the Working Group of the FCC. It provides a lot of benefits. Economies of scale, resource utilization, improve interoperability, all of those things. As I mentioned, regionalization's a national trend. As part of this study, we looked at more than, more than a dozen successful consolidations, and since then, we've looked at a number more, to really understand what are some of the best practices, what's worked, what hasn't, and how can you make a consolidation like this successful? There's a lot of good practices out there. There's a number of professional agencies, such as the International Association of Chiefs of Police, et cetera, who really provide a lot of resources on how you do this, and how you do it well, and encourage this quite a bit at their conferences. When you look at the solution that we're proposing, it's essentially a consolidated center. It brings together what's currently the eight 911 centers within Jefferson County that, that answer calls, both primary, primary, or what we call public safety answering points, such as Wheat Ridge, as well as the secondary ones, such as the fire agencies that Chief Brennan mentioned. We would house this in the current West Metro Fire Communications Center. When West Metro Fire Communications Center was built, it was actually built to house not only their operations, but also Lakewood's operations. For a number of reasons, that didn't happen at the time. But what it left us is a space that's actually not finished off, but built out to hold a much larger communication center. That actually reduces the cost and the amount of energy that it's going to take to get this up and running. So it's very fortunate to have that. We would have consolidated technology, standard operating procedures where we can, and a single authority with its own governance board. So we'd be essentially creating a quasi-governmental entity. Each agency who was bringing its, its communication center into this group would have a seat on that board. So Wheat Ridge Police would have a seat on that board. Right now, we're targeting a go-live in July of 2017. That may sound like not too far away, but a lot of work has been done over the past 18 months to really continue to move this idea forward as much as we can without the presence of an intergovernmental agreement. Things like the hiring of an executive director by, on a contract basis, by the Emergency Communications Authority. Meetings that have been taking place monthly with the chiefs from the different agencies, with dispatchers, with different groups who are actually trying to move forward technology solutions and other aspects of this particular solution. So we've got a really good jumpstart. We're working from a lot of good best practices and, and a lot of knowledge. In front of you, you'll see the agencies that are initially involved in, who would be bringing their communication centers to the, to this consolidated center. But you'll also see that basically, a total of 21 agencies would be served by this initially. Since that includes all of the agencies who are currently being served by one of the other 911 centers as they exist today. But we've also found interest from other groups. For example, Jefferson County Schools has asked to come on board and actually move their dispatch operations into this center when it, when it comes on board. So there's a lot of interest in this. People can see the synergies, the operational efficiencies, et cetera, that can come from this. We did examine a number of other options when we looked at this. There, everything from small agencies consolidating with larger agencies, to having sort of this, this very big conglomerated center where everybody would do fire, and everybody would do police, and those kinds of things. The option that we really settled on actually keeps the specialization of law enforcement dispatchers doing law enforcement, fire dispatchers doing fire, because there are a fair amount of differences between those two. And again, we started and ended this with the service levels, and making sure that we are providing the right service levels to the community. But we did examine another of, a number of other options. And frankly, they either didn't meet the service level that we were trying to achieve, or for some other reason, cost or whatever it might have been, weren't feasible. When you look at the benefits, I'll go through a number of different pieces, and I won't tick off every bullet point, but I do want to hit some of the major things. From a community and the citizen's perspective, we believe that there's a number of benefits there. First of all, we believe that there's going to be better service to the community. That starts with something as simple as, if you call now and you have a fire emergency, you are going to first go to a police dispatcher. That police dispatcher's going to ask you a whole bunch of questions about what your emergency is, and then they're going to transfer you to the appropriate fire EMS authority, who is going to ask you a whole bunch of the same questions. It's a point of extreme frustration for a lot of the citizens when it comes to 911 services, and it can add anywhere from 15 to 30 seconds of additional time to get a responder out, which in many of the situations that we're dealing with, obviously, is critical. So from a very base service level, whether it's time to answer, hold times, all those kinds of things will improve. But it's also going to improve the ability to dispatch resources and get them there when they need to get there. Right now, if you have, for example, someone who is on the border between two jurisdictions, and a call comes into one jurisdiction, if that other jurisdiction's resources are actually closer, but across that borderline, there's no easy way to actually dispatch those resources and bring them across. So you may be pulling someone from within the jurisdiction, but much further away to that response. Here, with the technology that we'll have, et cetera, the dispatchers will have the ability to see the resources that are closest, and dispatch those resources much more easily. Existing intergovernmental agreements allow for that type of mutual aid, but there's no easy way to invoke that as it stands now. So a number of these things are ways that we think the citizens will benefit. Unfortunately, here in Colorado, whether it's the floods, or fires, or whatever it might be, we've had a number of mass events that we've had to deal with. That often requires across jurisdictional response, and we believe that this 911 center will really allow for enhanced response in those cases. Not just in terms of the officers of the fire, fire, firemen who are responding, whatever it might be, but also from a dispatch center, and the ability to take on those prolonged responses and have the right resources there. So from a citizen's perspective, we believe that there's a number of benefits that'll be there. From the jurisdictions themselves, similarly, we believe that there will be improved service levels to the officers and to the citizens in each of those jurisdictions, and that's very important. We think that from a situational awareness perspective, being able to understand what's going on across the county, and really be able to, to be effective in responses to that, you know, you've heard that story that crime doesn't worry about jurisdictional boundaries. Is that same adage that's applied here? How do we better coordinate those responses? An important thing from a Wheat Ridge perspective is really that ability to leverage more resources across shifts. Make sure that we have the right numbers, the right types of dispatchers on duty at any given time during the, during the needs. I talked about some of the things around mass events, but even things that come down to, you know, training, technology, a lot of those things will be enhanced through this particular center. I mentioned earlier the decreased cost to implement some of the things like next-generation 911. Obviously, trying to implement it in one center, rather than trying to replicate that infrastructure across eight centers, will provide some synergies, both in terms of speed and ability to get it up and running, as well as cost. When we looked at the actual people's side of this equation, we're talking about, about 155 positions that will reside within this particular center. Anything from dispatchers to supervisors, trainers, HR folks, technology folks, a number of folks that'll, that'll work across this. There was a number of personnel principles that were laid out by the board that are really important to note and important to understand. This board, more than any other that I've seen in this type of consolidation, has gone out of its way to make sure that the people will be taken care of in this type of transition, and that, that people don't lose anything significant through the course of this. So you'll see some of the principles up here. I'll hit some of the key ones. All the current employees will have a position available in the center if they want one. It may not be the exact same position, but they will have the opportunity to move over to the center and, and have a job there. We'll still have a manage, or an application process for management and supervisory positions. We won't cut tenured salaries if they are moving to a lower position for a year. That's a piece that the organization has gone through. There's a lot of, of 911 centers that actually pay lower than other centers. We are going to raise pay rates to the aggregate, sort of the, the Jefferson County average, so to speak, or the market rate across that, so people won't lose anything. There's also been a lot of focus on making sure that the benefits package that's available to people really helps keep people whole, and make sure that they don't lose anything significant in that process. And a lot of work has gone into making sure that that's been done. One thing that I want to address on here, because it's come up in a number of forums, is, will these dispatchers have the appropriate jurisdictional knowledge? Will they understand the cities that they're dispatching for, et cetera? There's a number of ways that you can accomplish that. And part of the plan for this is that, one, one, people will get trained in a lot of the operational processes, et cetera, before they move over to the center. But once they move over to this center, we will actually make sure that people who know Wheat Ridge will be dispatching for Wheat Ridge until we have more people who know Wheat Ridge. And so over time, we continue to build the sort of cross-training, cross-functional, cross-jurisdictional knowledge of the people who work within this center to make sure that when someone calls, they're not getting someone who doesn't, you know, know anything about Wheat Ridge or the patterns of things that happen there, et cetera. So we do want to make sure that that jurisdictional knowledge is there and that the citizens get the level of service that they're accustomed to. From a current status perspective, at this point, we've been meeting, as I mentioned, over the past eighteen months to try to pull a lot of these things together. We've got an intergovernmental agreement that's been drafted, it's been circulated to the different jurisdictions, it is going through the approval process in a number of those. We already have a couple of approvals on the fire side who meet a little more frequently in some of those things already. We've done a number of study sessions with councils. Most of them have their votes in March. I think the last one is kind of earlier, mid-April, is the last IGA vote that we've got out there. But so far, good support. I mentioned hiring an executive director. That executive director is someone who comes from a consolidated center in Texas and who's managed one of these before, has good experience, understands what it takes to make this type of thing successful, has a very strong eye on the people aspects of it. She's been working for the past several months with the authority to try to drive a lot of these planning efforts. We've also got multiple committees that are working right now on aspects like technology and standard operating procedures, things of that nature, to make sure that we're ready to go when it comes on that time. Once the IGA is approved by all the jurisdictions who are going to be part of this, then we'll move into sort of the final planning and transition phases of this, again, with a target of July of 2017. We've heard a lot of concerns expressed over the course of this, and that's natural. This kind of change is a significant one, obviously. I want to address some of the big things that we've heard and how some of these are being handled. One of the things that we've heard is that these are never successful. They never accomplish what they want to accomplish, et cetera. I could tell you from having been to a number of these and worked with a lot of these who have been around for a long time that that's not true. Sure, there are some stories out there of ones that haven't been successful, but a lot of them come down to mistakes in implementation. There's a lot of good models, a lot of good ways that we know how to do these things now, and you can be assured that there's a lot of successful ones that are out there. There's a lot of concerns about employees losing out on whatever it might be: seniority, benefits, all of those kinds of things. As I mentioned earlier, through the personnel principles and through the work that this board has put in, there's been a huge focus on making sure that that doesn't happen and that the people really are taken care of. In fact, I think that in a lot of ways, this will create more opportunities in the center for career advancement, training, et cetera. Today, if you want to be a supervisor or a manager, a lot of times you have to wait for somebody to leave or quit or those kinds of things. This will create more opportunities for advancement, more opportunities for training, et cetera. We've also heard that the cost savings are overestimated. I can tell you that in going through this, so far, every cost estimate that we've had has actually turned out better than we expected it to. It's costing less or it's saving us more than we expected. Does that mean that, you know, we're going to hit all these things out of the bat and there's not going to be unexpected things that come up? Sure, there will be, but we're very confident in the savings numbers and the kinds of things that have been put out there. And the board has been very conservative about saying, you know, how fast are we going to try to take these savings? We want to make sure that this center is stable operationally and that it's got everything that we need until we start worrying too much about that aspect of it. I talked a lot about services to the officers, services to the citizens. I don't think that there's a single chief on that board that would be signing up for this if they thought the service was going to be compromised. The entire analysis, all of this work has really started and ended with services to the citizens, services to the officers. That's one thing that I can say confidently that I think will be there. I think that, you know, the one thing that is a concern to some of these smaller jurisdictions that don't have a center themselves and who get dispatched services through other centers is that, in some cases, they don't pay for those services today, for any number of reasons. They will end up paying some small amount in the future. When you look at it, however, most of these centers, it will still be much, much cheaper than they could possibly do it themselves with a lot more significant service levels, a lot more resources. So those are some of the concerns that we've heard. I'm sure there are others that are out there, but I'm happy to address those through questions, et cetera. From a financials perspective, I just wanted to talk briefly about, you know, what you see up here. So right now, it costs about eighteen-point-three million dollars to run the eight centers across the different jurisdictions. We believe that the future state will be about fifteen-point-three million dollars, or a total savings of just over three million dollars when you look at the numbers. That comes from a number of things. That comes from, you know, getting rid of repeat service contracts, better use of technology, a number of different components actually go into those savings. When you look at what the nine-one-one authority will be contributing, it's about four-point-two million dollars to the operation of this center. Obviously, as you know, the nine-one-one authority collects the nine-one-one fees and distributes those back out to the jurisdictions. The second line of revenue, the service users, those are the smaller jurisdictions that I mentioned earlier, who currently receive services from the actual nine-one-one centers in existence today. That's what we estimate the fees will be for those. Then, from the actual jurisdictions themselves, we expect about ten-point-eight million dollars to come from the jurisdictions. You'll see on the next page kind of how that compares in terms of where they are and how that breaks out. When you look at the actual numbers that are up there, this is the percentage contributions that are going to be done by each of the jurisdictions and what that equates to in terms of the annual contributions. When you look at this, the way that we built this model was to try to create a model where everybody sort of saved a similar amount from a percentage perspective. So obviously, you have all different sizes of nine-one-one centers across the county, and we wanted to try to create a model where people would share in the savings, and it wasn't like, oh, you're bigger, so you pay more, or those kinds of things. We tried to create a model that would actually be an equitable sharing of the benefits of this. So these are what the fundings come out from. You can see in the staff memo that you were provided on page two how this number compares to the current Wheat Ridge operating budget. Current budget is about just a little over nine-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, so the expected savings is in the range of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand for Wheat Ridge. I don't think that cost savings is the only reason to look at this. I think, again, it's important to note the increased service levels that are associated with this, but to give you a sense of where the numbers fall, that's where they end up. So that is what I had in terms of prepared presentation, but I am more than happy to answer as many questions as you would like.
Do I have questions from council? Larry?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. One is just, is the new center going to be kind of GPS-activated? In other words, someone calls in on a cellphone, nine-one-one call, and I know so many of the calls, especially here, are going to be coming in from cellphones because of our freeways that run through our city, and like up there at Kipling, Arvada Fire Department handles the emergency service that way, but I assume that RPD would be responding even though it's up there on the highway. And how does that all just kind of tie together? And someone calls in and you say, where am I, or where are you? And they say...
Right. So that touches on Brian's, a little bit on Brian's point about next-gen nine-one-one. So we already have the capability to take cellphone calls, and it's essentially an X-Y coordinate. Now, that's not a perfect system. You know, it pings, you know, off that nearest tower and that sort of decides where people are going. The bigger question, I think, is what Brian touched on from a GPS capability, is how do we know where our resources are? You know, I mean, we can figure out, you know, from a nine-eleven call, if it's on a hard line, it's going to pop up an address. If it's from a cellphone, it's going to give us an X-Y coordinate. We're going to be able to get an idea, hopefully, you know, with talking to somebody, an exact address, but we'll get that X-Y coordinate. We're one of the few agencies right now that, we're not GPS-capable in our patrol cars. We don't have that technology yet, and that'll be something that, as we move forward with this technology and with this new comm center, we'll be bringing forward with a cost estimate of what does this look like? Because it's important from a resource perspective for dispatcher to be able to look at a screen and say, well, I typically send this unit, but this one's like two blocks away, and can I get that resource there? It's not a huge expense, but it will get us caught up, this merger, this consolidation will get us caught up. Brian's point about next-gen nine-one-one goes beyond cellphones, though. It goes to text kind of nine-one-one calls. We're starting, we've gone live on that just recently. There's a lot of technology behind that, and it's difficult for an agency, you know, our size with our current staffing level to keep up with that and to stay current. And they're talking about going, you know, beyond that in terms of texting to social media and a variety of different other ways for the public to contact, you know, law enforcement or fire or EMS in case of an emergency. So this will help us leverage resources we don't have to do a better job in terms of service to our community. I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to welcome the chief back to work. Sure he can shoulder the load.
Well, that's one of the reasons I had to have that little nip and tuck.
I noticed in your letter that we will have a cost savings of about a quarter of a million dollars, and that's a good thing. But in the next paragraph, it says that there are some duties that may be kept in-house. And have you decided yet what those duties are, and how much will they cost, and will it eat up our, this quarter of a million dollars?
You know, it's a great question. It's one I had to mention to you if nobody asked the question, so thanks for asking it. We are going through right now cataloging all the duties that we have, and we're, as agencies, we're sort of sharing that in regards to what are the duties, you know, that we have, and how are we going to handle certain aspects of this? So we're working with the executive director of JeffCom, all of the chiefs are sheriffs, you know, to kind of figure out from a law enforcement perspective, what is that going to look like? So our comm center takes a variety of calls. It doesn't just take nine-eleven calls, it takes a lot of administrative calls. Somebody calls in on a code issue, somebody calls in because they want to talk to somebody in community development, and, you know, they're looking, they call in with a service request, I mean, an animal control request. So we're looking at how that transition of those calls is going to go. We're pretty confident that the center is going to have the capacity to handle all those, what we call administrative calls, so they're not the emergency or the non-emergency calls, but the administrative calls. Now we have to find the mechanism for the center to let us know. And some of that's going to be technology, and some of that might be people. We just don't know yet, working through that. I don't anticipate chewing up that quarter of a million-plus dollars with this. At most, we might be talking about some minor upgrades to some of our phone technology that we have right now and a position or two, you know, that's low-end records clerk. We may be looking at extending the hours of our records department, because we won't have a dispatch center there. We're not thinking of going twenty-four hours a day, but we may need to extend that coverage a little bit to get us through, you know, some of those times of the day when we have people coming into our lobby and things. So we've probably got two and a half, three pages of, these are things we need to look at, but I'm sure we're going to be able to find, you know, fixes for most of those. And we'll keep you appraised to that, but I don't anticipate chewing up, you know, that quarter of a million dollars with other requests for this. Might be a position or two at the most, maybe some technology upgrades, but relatively low. But besides the savings, and I really want to point this out, the savings are important, particularly, you know, for our community, given, you know, where we are from a revenue-expenditure perspective. But what's more important to me is the service that the center will give us. We have had several near-misses, you know, in our comm center as a result of just having one dispatcher call-taker on duty over the years. We had a pretty horrific storm that came through here in two thousand and nine, if you remember that, caused a lot of damage. We just had two dispatchers on, a call-taker and a dispatcher, and we were totally overwhelmed like that, totally overwhelmed with phone calls. If you call in on a busy night to our comm center, and Dave knows this because I harp on people about it, if we're busy and there's a lot of radio traffic going on, you're probably going to get this kind of response: nine-one-one, what's your emergency? And if you say what it is, and it's not an emergency, they'll say, will you please hold? And that won't happen, and the chances of that happening in this center will be much reduced from a customer service perspective, because you have this force multiplier. You're going to have all of these extra call-takers that are there, and they're picking up nine-one-one calls from throughout the county. And if we staff this thing correctly, when Arvada has an emergency, or we have one, or Lakewood has one, you're going to be able to devote resources to that and minimize, you know, the potential impact and loss of life that might result from that. That's the bigger piece of this from my perspective, because we can't staff our comm center right now, and we're just having a tough time. We're about fifty percent staffing, sixty percent staffing right now. We're just having a tough time getting qualified people that can work in that center.
I had Ms. Duran.
I just wanted to clarify, with the contributions here, I don't see the Wheat Ridge Fire Department on there. Is that because you merged that into the West Metro? Okay, okay, you anticipated that. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wood?
This is a question I anticipate from citizens. When we say consolidation of nine-one-one services and a Wheat Ridge resident calls to nine-one-one, and you say resources will be sent there, that still generally means Wheat Ridge Police would respond to a Wheat Ridge City call, correct? So when we say this consolidation, it's not of police services, it is of just the nine-one-one calls? Because I anticipate that as a question from citizens.
What it will benefit us, though, on is if we have a nine-one-one call, it's of a police nature, and it's on the boundary, or it's a fire call, and there are closer resources, we have the ability to get those resources there to assist. And we didn't have that before. Before, we had to get on the air, you know, as an event was going on, and say, hey, Arvada, can you help us out? Or Jeffco, can you help us out? Now, these dispatchers will have that information, and if we need to draw those resources or that other agency, occasionally Lakewood and Arvada and Jeffco call us for help, we'll be able to do that.
Okay, great. So generally, though, it'll be our city responding to our calls, except when we need to, and then that's how this will definitely benefit us?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
I do have a question. The location of the center, is that something? I guess I'm really concerned about if something should happen to the center. Is there any kind of a backup system?
Sure. Do you want me to talk about that? Yeah, so there's a number of different ways that we're looking at backup, and we'll have a multi-pronged solution. So some of the comm centers that are going to be vacated through this process will actually keep available for a backup if we have to actually move physical locations. There's also the ability to actually transfer the operations virtually to other call centers, other nine-one-one centers around the metro area.
Quickly.
Yeah, so both of those will be options in terms of keeping that alive and running.
We've been asked to... Wait a minute, if I forgot the right one here.
So we'll be bringing the IGA to council next week for approval. I think it's mentioned in there, but the Arvada Fire Protection District and the West Metro Fire Protection Districts have approved it. And we're next up, followed by Lakewood, Golden, Arvada, and Jefferson County, you know, as well. They're looking at some additional costs based on this backup center, but it shouldn't impact the IGA at all, so.
So what we need is a show of hands that we would be backing up an IGA when it comes in, or an interest in it for sure. Are we good there? Great.
All right, we'll see you next week.
Great report.
If you have any questions, please give me a call. All right?
You ready?
Mr. Goff, yes?
Well, thank you. Before we get into a great discussion on this item, I'd like to just give a quick budget update on the two thousand and fifteen-year end, just so you kind of have a foundation to help you with your discussion here, so you know what the revenues and expenditures are looking like right now. So again, just real general, large picture. These are unaudited budget numbers right now. Our audit's scheduled for May, so these are pretty close, though. They may change a little bit, but good enough for a high-level discussion. So our total revenues in the general funds were a little bit higher than we estimated, so about two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. So we'll be able to add that additional money to the... You guys probably...
Mr. Goff, yes?
Well, thank you. Before we get into a great discussion on this item, I'd like to just give a quick budget update on the 2015 year end, just so you kind of have a foundation to help you with, with your discussion here, so you know what the revenues and expenditures are looking like right now. So just, again, just real general, large picture. These are unaudited budget numbers right now. Our audit's scheduled for May. So these are pretty close though. They may change a little bit, but good enough for a, a high level discussion. So our total revenues in the general funds were a little bit higher than we estimated, so about $217,000. So we'll be able to add that additional money to the fund balance. And our expenses were a little less than we estimated, about $462,000. So our unrestricted fund balance is going to be just under $700,000 larger than we expected. So as you know, we've, we've already talked about potentially using a portion of that for where we are, for the Fruteo project, if that moves forward. And, and we've already made one fairly large supplemental budget appropriation this year for the Tabor Street improvements. I think that was about maybe $150,000, Scott, to, to install the, the pedestrian lighting. So a good chunk of that has been used up already. The good news is, now, when we compare the 2015 budget to 2014, revenues are, are increasing at a significant amount for Wheat Ridge. 4% is a good number for Wheat Ridge. We haven't really seen that number in quite some time. And that total's about $1.2 million. And most of that's coming from the sales tax. So sales tax, it was looking pretty good in Wheat Ridge in 2015, about an 8%, increase in sales tax, which equates to about $1.5 million. So you see, total revenues are up 1.2. Sales tax is up 1.5. So that shows you there's some decreases in some other revenue sources to make up that $300,000 there. One of those decreases is in our use tax, just a small decrease of 2.4%. They were about $80,000. So as you remember, sales tax and use tax, they're our largest, about 70% of our total revenues. So it's very important that we're seeing increases in those. This is just a real quick chart graph to show you, again, how 15 compared to 14. And again, you can see the sales tax is the largest variance between the two years. There was a significant increase in sales tax over 14. I think a lot of that was just due to the economy improving year by year since the recession. And a few new sales tax generators have come on board in, in the city. Everything else was, other taxes is a little bit higher too, but everything else, all the, our other major revenues, pretty even compared to 2014. So I'm looking at a little bit of history of our revenues and expenditures. You see here, going back to 2010 through 2015, on average, our revenues are increasing about 3.5% in, in the general fund only. So a decent increase. And then our expenditures have been increasing about 4%. As you can see, our revenues are higher than our expenditures and our general funds. So that difference between those revenues and expenditures is our fund balance and then, and reserves and money that we transfer to the CIP budget for capital projects. So it's a good thing we have that gap. The red's on top and the yellow's on bottom. Our revenues right now are higher than our expenditures. So we do have additional funds to go to the capital budget. And then this is, the green line is our fund balance, just shows a trend on our reserves. Our fund balance from 2010 to 2015 is decreasing somewhat. We were quite a bit higher in 2010 at 41%, which is much higher than our reserve policy specifies, and it's decreased down to about 27% in 2015. So funding, a lot of what you're going to talk about tonight potentially is, is funding of, of capital investment programs, projects, and the general fund transfer that we make every year is, is the primary source of revenue for capital projects. Fortunately, we've received some significant grants over the last, last decade really for capital projects. So that's really enabled us to get quite a, quite a few things done. But without those large grants, it's hard to really fund the large projects. The Kipling, or the Youngfield 32nd Project, we got a $6 million, was it six, or $3 million? $3.5 million federal grant. You know, we got the $25 million grant for the Wadsworth Project. The Trail, Kipling Trail Project was, was grant funded. So we've been fortunate in getting some grants, because the general fund revenues really cannot keep up with a large capital expenditure. We're doing, revenues are fairly sufficient to take care of our daily operating expenses, but when you try to use those for large capital projects, there's just not enough revenues there without some other means such as grants. So, and just a reminder for y'all, so you have this with your discussion this evening. There was a policy adopted by city council in 2011 on your reserves. Our policy is to maintain a 17% minimum reserve, and the policy does establish appropriate use of the funds if, if you go over that reserve amount. So just a, a quick background on, on budget, and I think tonight's discussion is Genevieve Wooden and George Pond put on agenda to talk about potential other revenue sources that you may want to look at, fees, and then specifically a stormwater utility. And Scott is here to discuss that when you are ready to discuss that.
Yes.
Where the money's coming from? Does it have a property tax over?
This one? Property tax is, is in the other taxes. It's about 2%, 3% of our total general fund revenues. Again, about a $325,000 home that's valued at that much, it's about $45, $46, I think the city receives in property tax.
Do you want to jump right into stormwater, or do you want to talk about...
Were there any questions about...
Yeah. Maybe Genevieve and George could introduce it.
I'll just give a quick introduction. Many, many people know this, but I guess just historically, just to kind of put it in the context of the last few years, as we've seen this gap, and as many of you have been paying attention to the capital improvement expenditures, which are a number of things, including relatively, you know, simple things like preventative maintenance, and, and then much more complex and expensive things like the large capital investment, some of which are grant funded. And there has been a lot of work that's gone on, to be fair, over the last several years. A lot of that has, has been supplemented by grant money. And as you look at those grant dollars going away, it doesn't mean obviously that we shouldn't be looking, continuing to look for, for grant dollars. And I think the city's been very good about that. However, it, it, it very much begs the question when you look at the, when you look at the balance sheet, how do we, how do we maintain, not only maintain some of these things from preventative maintenance standpoint? And I know we've all kind of stood up there as we look at the asphalt overlay and some of these other things and kind of understand the magnitude of that. And it's really not actually getting us ahead. It's, it's just keeping us pretty much at status. So, you know, we, we had this discussion a few years ago, and I, and I guess that's the, that's the small bit of context that I want to provide, that, that, you know, we had a lot of conversation about whether or not this is, you know, a fee versus a tax is, 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 is an appropriate mechanism for, for, for doing this. And, and I suppose that'll be part, that can be part of the conversation tonight. And I only want to, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, but I only want to kind of refer to what really is the larger number in, in the packet that talks about, I think it's 260-some million dollars, 267 million dollars. You know, and a lot of that, much of it was articulated in the Dirt Task Force, which is referenced here. And I think to be fair, some of those things are, in fact, transportation related, the T in Dirt Task Force. And some of them are infrastructure and, and stormwater issues, which may, may be more, maybe more specific to the, to the fee that we're, we're talking about. So I, I do think that as we move forward, understanding some of the priorities that have been already articulated in the community and worked on in, in a, I think, a fair, a fair manner with a consensus basis. Some of them are storm and infrastructure. Some of them are bike and ped and transportation, and, and we probably need to figure those things out in terms of what, what's what. But clearly, if you want to do, you know, we, we probably are, we have our hands full just to keep up. And I think we can talk about that and should, but I, I do, I do believe that's a fair statement. And then that puts us in a position not to really, to be able to stretch to these other, these other things that have been, have been discussed and agreed upon. And I know there's some conversations. I mean, one that Tim and I hear quite a bit was one of the higher things on the, on the Dirt Task Force for, you know, pavement, pedestrian improvements, stormwater improvements on 38th Avenue between Kipling and Youngfield. It was very high, it was number three maybe, or one or two, I can't remember, on the, on the Dirt Task Force. But it's got a really high price tag, and it's hard to, it's hard to go get that. So, you know, fundamentally, I think this is about, is the fee, is a fee an appropriate way to do this? And then perhaps we can roll into some of the other conversation, which would, would be, how do you start to think about prioritization and, and, and capturing the things that are most, most appropriate to capture with the fee? Because I don't think everything might be appropriate for the fee, but some would. So that, I'm sorry, that's my take on it. Do you have anything to add?
My comment would be that I, you know, I've lived here for 22 years, and I remember city council members coming to my home years ago, over 10, 15 years ago, talking about stormwater and drainage issues. And, and we address them piece by piece by piece as needed, but we don't come out ahead because we're always just fixing the problem. We're fixing the immediate problem right in our face. That's the big, big issue, and we're not really looking at the structure of the city and what we need to do long-term. And I think it's really important that we look at this, and we look at it citywide, and we don't wait for the rains that are coming in April and May and June, and the calls that are going to come into the city saying, this is flooding, that's flooding, there's water puddling here. When the water puddles and it sits there, it damages the streets, and then we have a different problem. And these are issues that we cannot keep kicking down the road. We have to address it. And if we need to consider a fee, that's something that should be considered so that the issue doesn't keep getting pushed away, pushed away, pushed away. And that, these are some things that we really sit down and we make some hard decisions and that we address. We have residents that have dealt with this for years, and it's important that we really not ignore it. We really say, this is the issue, this is our list of capital improvements or capital repairs, and that the people that have been flooded every year, they'll come in and they'll tell us, or they call the city, and we know it's coming. So we should make some hard decisions and really address it.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Davis?
I just have a quick comment, and I think it goes back to the $47. And sorry, I knew I read that somewhere, but it was right in the first memo. The $47 per homeowner. I think, you know, it's interesting because you talk to folks who, who have lived in New York or lived in other cities and other states, and they realize, you mean, of my entire property tax, of my taxes that I pay on my home, only $47 goes to the city of Wheat Ridge. And I think when you tell folks that, it's kind of an aha moment, because it's, you know, that $47 needs to be divided in many different ways. You know, police and snow removal and, you know, just a lot of different ways that as a homeowner, that is my expectation of our city, is to provide those things. And when I'm only, and including, you know, sidewalks and drainage, and, and when I'm only giving $47, I think that's kind of an aha moment of, something's got to give. But, but, and it's interesting, because when you talk to folks from other, I mean, even look at Golden and their mill, but, and even other states, it's just unbelievable. So I do think something, something needs to happen. And I think, again, I think if, if the, if everyone knew that only $47 of those taxes is really going to the city, and the rest is going to the county and the schools and, and the fire department and, and those kinds of things, they'd be, they'd be supportive of something like this. They're not, you know, it's not going to be a, you know, sweet thing to support, but I, I think people would understand if they have the information.
Ms. Duran.
So what would the average fee be for a residential home? Is it $25 more a year? Yeah, if we had a, if we had a...
Stormwater utility?
Fee for a residential. And then what would it be for commercial?
Yeah, well, back in, I'll have to look it up in the report here. We did have a consultant back in 2004, kind of figured that out for us. And the fee that is, that is charged to property owners is based on a, on a, on a unit basis, where a single property, residential property would be one unit. We call it an ERU in here, equivalent of residential unit. And that one, let's see if I can find that amount. Remember what that was off the top of my head here? Oh, yeah, monthly, we talked about a monthly residential fee of $4.10, and that would generate $500,000 annually. And then depending on how much, you know, if you went higher or lower than that accordingly. Industrial, commercial properties would be based on the acreage, and typically that would, that, that could be, you know, three EUs, five, 10, whatever the size of the property is and, and the surface, you know. A lot of times on these two, they, they factor in the property itself, how much of it is hard surface, you know, meaning it generates lots of runoff, whereas if it doesn't, has less of that, then it's less. But that's something I think we'd want to go back and recalculate, being these are 2004 numbers and...
Yeah, I'd like to know what those are. Because they could range anywhere between, what, 500 or 1,000 a month, depending on...
Correct.
...acreage, like you were saying. So there's a lot of factors that could determine that too. So that's something I would like to have before I make a decision. And have we talked about who would administer this if, if we decided to do it?
Yeah, I think administration would be something we'd need to have, look into and have a talk about too, as far as, you know, yeah, the actual, you know, who, who's going to manage it, run it, run it, but then also even, even the billing part of it. Some cities, ones that already bill out for certain things, whether it's water, sewer, recycling, I don't think we have a system in place right now that does that. So that, that's something we'd have to figure out as well, is, you know, how we would even do the billing.
We don't. And we talked about it when we looked at this years ago. And yeah, there, I mean, there's obviously a couple of options. We could try to do it in-house. It'd probably require maybe some additional staffing, or there's, there's a lot of firms that you can contract with. And of course, they're going to take a fee.
Well, sure.
So there'll be a fee for that. But that's probably the, based on our size, since we don't have any other type of utility billing, it's probably the best to contract with a company to do it, in my mind anyway.
Okay. Because I know there, I mean, I know we need to do something, but I still would like to have all of this information...
Oh, sure.
...in front of me first.
Yeah, and, and just, yeah, thank you, Monica, for saying that. Because tonight, tonight is really a very, a very first general discussion. It's like, do you, do you want us to bring back more specific data on this? And before, you know, we don't want to spend too much time if, if there's not a consensus to move forward, but we'll definitely bring back.
Okay.
And, you know, just, if I could maybe respond to your question too about what are the fees? And when I was doing a little bit of research on this recently, Northland has some pretty good information out, and they compared a lot of different cities. I don't know how old this is. I think it's fairly recent. It doesn't include, Lakewood just increased theirs. They, they were $1.98 a month for a residential home, but I think they doubled it. So this isn't, didn't pick up that. But, so across the metro area, it ranges from anywhere from $1.39 a month to, all the way up to $14.26 a month. And Fort Collins is, is the highest of $14.26 a month. And then resident and commercial can be done in, in many different ways. It doesn't necessarily have to be just some impervious surface. You, you could just do a flat rate too, and, and there's all kinds of different mechanisms for that too. In, in this Northland example, they have like a, a gas station, for example. Fort Collins is, is $28.53 a month, and goes all the way down to $5.53 a month for Longmont. A larger small shopette, which is maybe 50,000 square feet, the, the fees out there right now range from $14 a month to $73.93. Again, Fort Collins, Fort Collins has some high fees. A bigger office building, which is maybe 200,000, 260,000 square feet, it ranges anywhere between $65 a month, which is Longmont, to Fort Collins, again, 449 a month. And then a, a large retail center, which is over 600,000 square feet, could range anywhere, it does range, from 150 a month, which is Longmont, all the way up to Fort Collins, which is $1,000 a month. So there's, there's different matrix, different ways you can, you can factor in. And you could do it right for Wheat Ridge on what makes sense in Wheat Ridge. You don't have to do what all these other cities are doing.
Is there any more that possibly...
Yeah, could. Yeah, yeah. Yep. It's up to council imposes a fee. You can, you can set any, I don't think there's any state statute that dictates it has to be a certain way, so. Yep.
Mr. Fitzgerald's been getting to say something.
Yes, that's right. In general, I'm in favor of forming a stormwater utility for a couple of reasons. One is, we can do it ourselves, and we can start working on a problem we have right away. One is, we can do it ourselves and we can start working on a problem we have right away. So that's a good thing. But I'll tell you what I'm afraid of. We have about $267 million in deferred, well, in, in dirt and deferred maintenance. We have about 600, or 6 million that we need for Wadsworth. We have about 9 million if we decide to go ahead with 38th. We have $6 million just in critical maintenance. And as we all know, there's, we have much deferred maintenance in the city. We have other things. We have the Gold Line Station. We have the potential for costs associated with Clear Creek Crossing. And I, I would rather think bigger, do something to solve all of these problems and include the stormwater in that larger solution. And here's what I'm afraid of. I'm afraid that if we decide to go ahead with a stormwater utility, even though it's a very small amount of money, that there's certain people in our community that will say, "Well, we won't give you any other taxes because you've got taxes." And we will have only solved one problem while all these other hosts of problems go unattended. And as Kim said, you know, we sort of have a history of kicking the can down the road. I think we just really need to take a step to make, think bigger about all of our problems and try and find a solution that incorporates all of our problems so we can get, get started. We need to prepare ourselves for the future. We need to, to position ourself to attract businesses, to compete with other neighboring cities, to attract young families. We can't just let ourselves go downhill and, and we've done that. So in order for us to look to the future, we just have to face the bigger problem. So I would, although I'm in favor of a stormwater utility, I would rather put a discussion on that off until we think about the larger issue or the larger issues and try and move forward in, in a logical way. Because I don't want to be in a position of having people say, "Well, we're not going to give you any more money because you're already getting $4 a month." And one other just side fact is we have to recognize that the dirt figures are 12 years old and almost assuredly are inaccurate.
Mr. Matthews.
We're sort of, I kind of like a little bit about what Tim said, what Monica said. We're, I think we're, I think we need to look at this in a little bit of a more general perspective. For a while, I was HOA, on the board of, HOA Board for a place over near here in Wadsworth and 38th there. And, you know, we had, and it's a little bit what dirt has done here. We had, we had experts come in and tell us what we had to have for repair reserves. And I think we need to be proactive in taking that same sort of approach in how much do we want to spend per year and do we need some kind of a repair reserve figure, if you understand what I'm saying. For instance, we knew that the, the elevators were about at the end of their lifetime, it's going to cost us $70,000. So it's no different than what we're doing here. But then we had to, as part of the HOA fee, figure all of that in, all these life expectancies. So that all of a sudden, something didn't come crashing down and we say, "Oh, we didn't expect that. Oh, you know, we didn't expect the roof was going to go out on us this year. We thought we had 10 more years left." And, and get it organized that way. So I understand the need and I, and I hate to be the proverbial naysayer all the time. So I, I do encourage us to consider this, but in a bigger perspective than just stormwater. But yet we have to, at the same time, determine our priorities for the cash and the income and the revenue that we already have. And I can't help but to ask the question of Mr. Brink, what could he have done with that million dollars we just gave to Fruitdale School Development that was out of the taxpayers' money? You know, one guy is getting that so he can build 16 apartment units. And what could we have done for all of the citizens? Could we have done maybe 50 or 20 of these little drainage issues that needed to be done? So in the, in conjunction with raising taxes, you know, fee is a tax, I don't care what you want to call it, we need to also prioritize our spending and make sure we don't just open the floodgates and say, "Well, we need $10 million, so let's just get $10 million coming in." And do so with some respect for the taxpayers' money.
Okay, I'm hearing, looking at the whole picture from both of you, I think Monica is really seeking more information before she considers anything. Let's continue on.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. I want to reiterate that this is such a small portion of, of the problem and the solution that, that in no way was bringing this up an indication that this is going to, to, to really solve the larger picture. So I appreciate actually the discussion points because in fact, I think, I 100% agree. Like this is very small. As a matter of fact, I don't think that, that this tax as a fee is appropriate for a lot of those things. It's appropriate for only some of those things. And so, and, and I would stand by that. I, I don't believe that we should do this and then spend it on, on a, a whole bunch of things that you guys just mentioned, because I don't think that's what this fee should be used for. And that leaves us with all of those other things that need to be prioritized and need to be put in, in, in some sort of chronological order and rank order and we figure out how to deal with that. So I agree with that 100%. In, in some ways, I think, in, in many ways, the conversation is, was twofold and that is like, is this council willing to talk about a fee? Because we've had, we've been in a position where we weren't willing to talk about a fee in the past and so that's one question. And the other one is probably, are we willing to talk about the other, the other needs? And it sounds like that's, and it sounds like that's a, a request as well. And I think that, that's, I mean, I think that's really good. I, I appreciate that. On both sides of the equation, I want to make sure that I'm listening carefully to Mr. Matthews and, you know, it's, 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 it's prioritizing our, our current expenditures as well as, as, as the incomes that we're trying to increase. So I agree with that and would support that.
I, I agree that we need, we need an updated plan and look at everything as a, as a whole. And then, you know, and look at our priorities and, but there's also, we can do different processes for different pieces. There's more than one way to skin a cat. And so I think our starting base needs to be an updated plan, an updated list of priorities and some, you know, updates on costs and expenditures. And then from there, we can dissect it into the smaller pieces and, and look, is one more appropriate as a, a fee? Is one more appropriate to maybe try as a sales tax, is another one more appropriate to maybe add all new building permits, pay this towards this fund? I mean, there's lots of other ways that we can, and look at bringing in the different revenues. So I support further investigation of this topic.
Since this is, is from 2007, can we update it, at least for my sake, and kind of update what we have done and haven't done? I mean, I can kind of guess, looking at the list here, and have that for us at our next conversation, so we know exactly what we're looking at?
And you're looking at the dirt rankings?
Yep, I've got 26 here.
And update, obviously we, we couldn't update the ranking, but just the cost? Yeah, what we've done so far and the cost?
What we've done so far.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can, we can look at those.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I guess my first question is, Scott, did you have a presentation and we just kind of jumped ahead or?
No, no, I didn't.
You didn't have a presentation? Okay. Okay. I guess my comments are that a stormwater utility, in my mind, is a very defined fee and it has a very defined purpose. And that those purposes would be used for this fee. And, and if you were to ask the people whose homes have flooded and they've spent hundreds and maybe much more money over the years, cleaning up their problems at their homes and in their yards, and if we were to say to them, "Hey, for five bucks a month," you know, what would their answer be? And I haven't had the extreme problems that I know people one block away from me have had. And I would say, "Yep, I'm willing to spend five bucks a month to help with our city's stormwater infrastructure." And again, this is a very defined purpose for this money. And again, I agree that we have huge problems and huge issues in the city, capital projects that need to be addressed in some manner. But I do feel strongly that the city should very seriously look at a stormwater utility with very defined purposes and how that will really help address some of these very specific problems that have been going on for years. And that does not mean I am not concerned about the other problems in the city.
I just like, would like to ask Scott, the paragraph here about the 267 million, I'm wondering if you could make a list of some of our deferred maintenance? I mean, I'm, I'm talking about big estimates. I'm not talking about specific and really thought out. I'm just talking about in general, what are our deferred maintenance needs?
Yeah, I think if we, the 267 million, I believe includes the, the Dirt Task Force findings, but it, I think it was all encompassing, you know, consider some of our long-term maintenance needs, paving, you know, our streets. You know, we do have an overlay program going on now that is, you know, helping us try to keep up with it best we can, but, you know, we're not doing that at the level we like. So I think some of that backlog is figured in that. These drainage needs certainly are, you know, sidewalks, bike pit, all these other, all these other, you know, infrastructure needs we have out there, facilities, I believe equipment maybe even.
Yeah, it, like, like Scott said, it is definitely all encompassing and for the next meeting, we can, we can break that down a little bit further. We, we already have it broken down, but it's, it's, it's probably, you know, it's, it's the wish list of what the, if, if we could get everything. So it's obviously probably way out of, out of range of what we could ever do, but yeah, there's municipal facilities in there, the whole bike pit master plan, all the recommendations that were in there are included in that 267 million. So you got to keep in perspective what it is and we can, we can break that down for, when we get in more detailed discussions, so when you prioritize, you get a better feeling of exactly what that big, that, that number is.
I'm, I'm asking just because I think we all know that we're in dire financial straits and we're probably going to have to ask our citizens for a sales tax increase at some point. And we have to be able to explain to them what, what, what the needs are in some sort of a concrete way. So that's all I'm asking. And I'd like to ask Jen, I acknowledge and agree with you that the drainage is, is a big problem and we have a lot of problems in District 3 also. But would you be opposed to including those drainage needs into something that serves a larger purpose? For example, possibly a tax increase?
I do, I do support a tax increase because there are capital improvement issues that we do need to address. However, I do have to say for this specific purpose, I do support a fee. So yes, yes, I, I am interested in exploring a tax increase and how that might be used in the city. But I think this is kind of a, a separate little issue. And it's not a little issue, but these, these fees are somewhat small per household. So I support both.
Ms. Hoppy.
Kind of along the lines of what I was saying, like there is a, a whole picture that we need to look at, but this is, and I, I agree with Genevieve that, you know, this is one of the things that it's a, a smaller piece that we can split out. I don't think that, I don't think just imposing a tax to cover all encompassing is the way to go. I think that there are other ways that we should, we should look at different things. Like I said, you know, maybe different fees on, you know, new building permits or, you know, fees for storm, stormwater or, you know, a, a property tax increase or a sales tax increase. Like there's more ways to look at everything, but I think we need to look at what all the needs are and then have discussion on how do we feel like we could fulfill these needs? What's appropriate for each need? I don't necessarily think a sales tax increase for stormwater is, is appropriate, but yet a small fee I feel is more appropriate. So that's kind of where I am with that.
So what I keep hearing is to look at all of the needs as well as the possibilities for paying for what's needed. Ms. Ren.
Go ahead. I think your hand was out of focus.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to clarify because sometimes I think about it, I'm not sure I said what I thought I said. There's, there's really two issues here. Number one is a wish list that I would like to have. And then number two is actual necessity. For instance, this structure out of a 30-year life only has five left. And, and that part of it helps you delineate your priorities. I mean, this is, this has got five years left, we need $100,000 for that. And as one of the guys, one guy said to me when I was running for office, he said, "You know, I really like to ride my bike, but having a bike, a bike lane doesn't do me any good if I can't get past the potholes. I'd rather have you fix the hole first before you put in the, the pot, the bike lane." And that's kind of on the wish list type of thing. There's the pothole that has to be fixed and then there's some cosmetic things that could maybe, at some point in time, the curves are going to cross and we, and we need to kind of consider them both and then see where we can satisfy the most needs based on actual deterioration needs and night, would be nice to haves.
Our needs and wants.
Needs and wants.
So Larry, if I could just interject real quickly, I think what I heard is, so, I mean, asset replacement schedules are important for you for, to make these types of decisions? Okay.
Because that, that gives you a timeline. Well, I need this $100,000 for Structure X in four years. Well, that places it on the timeline. And then we have to build a repair reserve to make sure the money is there and we don't just all of a sudden get there and say, "Well, I guess we'll have to charge everybody $100 this year just to do that." And so that keeps everything orderly. Thank you.
If I can add, I think that not only beyond just the needs of what needs to be done, I do think we have to think in terms of amenities as being part of our own economic development so that the additional, the bike rain or the, whatever it is, you know, makes the citizens and the businesses want to come here. So it's, it has to be a very delicate balance of expenditures that help our income as well as help our maintenance.
Can you tell me what percent of our revenue is spent on maintenance and, and projects right now?
Well, we, I don't know if I'll put it in percentage, but we, we try to, if you look, if you just want to look at the larger assets, our roads and, and drainage and such as that, we, right now are spending about $2 million a year. We try to on preventative maintenance, which includes the chip seal and the slurry seal and the asphalt overlay, those three programs. Again, that's just for maintenance of the roads. And then, you know, we have very limited funds for, only when we can. And if we can maybe tie it to another project for drainage, as the 29th Avenue Drainage Project, we were fortunate enough to get a, a free pipe from Denver Water, um, down 29th, which, which helped catalyze that project. So Scott, in addition to preventive maintenance, I mean, what other large maintenance, that's-
Yeah, preventive maintenance, sorry. The $2 million a year that Patrick mentioned, that's, that's in our, in our capital investment program and probably just doesn't include our, our operations budget, which is all the labor and materials and equipment that we use for, you know, patching the potholes and plowing the snow and all those other things. So to quantify that in, in exact dollars or percentage.
We could, we could pull those numbers out for more detailed discussion on what, and because there is maintenance dollars in all the different budgets and, and as Scott mentioned, we can try to get a, a number for that.
Okay, and we can have that in our, our next conversation? All right, thank you.
Ms. Wooden again?
I just wanted to make another comment regarding Tim's question and where we're going to get these other income sources from. And Janice mentioned this too, that there's different-
And Janice mentioned this too, that there's different ways we can get this income and, and I thoroughly agree with that. When we were in Washington DC several weeks ago, um, Patrick and I went and we learned of other funding that, for Wadsworth, possibly, for 38th Avenue, possibly, for the Gold Line Station, possibly. So there are some other funding mechanisms out there and grants and, um, other ways that we can pool this money together. But one thing that we heard at the National League of Cities Conference is everybody wants the same kind of money. Everybody needs infrastructure money and it's somewhat competitive. And so there are grants out there and we can apply for them and the city in the past has been successful in getting grants. Patrick mentioned during the budget talk that we have gotten some grants that have helped us a lot. And we can continue to apply and, and look for that money. However, we do need to realize that we're in competition with every other city and, you know, hopefully we'll get some of that money, but it's certainly not guaranteed. So yes, those other projects, Wadsworth, 38, the Gold Line, Clear Creek Station, all that, there are other funding sources. These things don't happen that quickly though and we need to consider, like you said, all different kinds of funding.
Any more discussion on this? It, it sounds like we're asking for more information. And keep considering it and everyone is aware that this is a definite need as well as the list. Okay.
Okay.
We were done with that conversation.
So can I just clarify, um, kinda takeaways here? One was we're gonna go back and look at the DIRTT task force that was done back in 2007, update that the best we can, kinda based on the input we heard here. And then as far as going back and looking at the, uh, uh, stormwater utility, um, you know, more specifics with that is, was it the council's desire for us to do that too or were, were we kind of sticking more to the big picture thing?
Put together some options on, on what type of fee structure could be put in place and how compares to other cities. Okay.
Is it more specifics?
I think that's a great approach. Okay, I thi-
Just one thing, and it's, it's more, it's a discussion that I wanted to have at our retreat, but it didn't happen. So I just wanna bring something up because, you know, I think a part of our retreat, I think all of us were looking forward to having the retreat and be able to get discussions with one another and, and more views and if we haven't had a chance to talk one another, kinda learn more about each other, learn about that. And I guess I, I had some, on, on the last Monday's meeting, I just had a question and, um, and it was regarding Mr. Matthews' comment. And I don't lose sleep very often, but on this one I did. And it was regarding, and I, I wanna ask Mr. Matthews, when you had said that you've heard five council people say that the voters weren't smart, my first assumption is, I don't wanna jump to the assumption that that was the five, necessarily five Wheat Ridge Council people.
Well, it was a combination of a state representative, past council members, and I've heard it implied that sometimes hear from this council that the people just need, once they elect us, they need to kinda go away and just give us free rein and let us do what we're doing. And I don't believe that that's true representative government.
Okay, so I guess this is my request and I think this kinda goes back to the, the, the word we've used before, divisive, because I've, you know, I pulled up the description and, um, you know, it basically is, you know, causing hostility between people and, and I don't, I wanna do away with that. And that, that is my ultimate request. But I guess when something is said of, I've heard five council people say that the voters aren't smart.
Politicians.
Oh, politicians.
Try not to get personal.
Right, but I think-
Five politicians in this room say that.
Right, so I guess though, but, but then just in that statement there, you said you didn't hear us say, say it. You necess, you somewhat implied it from some of the other things we said. So I guess to me-
I've heard that stated, that we're, you know, once we're elected, the people just need to let us do our jobs and go away.
But then the next-
I've heard that said.
Okay, and then the other comment was that the folks, um, I, you know, and the folks aren't smart enough to make the decision.
That I've heard in this very room also, that they're just not capable of understanding the complexities of government.
I guess part of my request is because fortunately or unfortunately, people interpret what they want from that. And I guess to me, you know, I've, I've tried a couple times to sit down and, and talk with you and hopefully we'll still get that opportunity when you have time. But, so I'm guessing the only way you could pull that from perhaps something I've said would have been on the dais. And it, you know, to me, it was more, this is how I felt, was that it was something that I said. I mean, you know, it, cause you used a number and it, so it's hard for, and again, it's implied, it's interpretation, it's perception. So I think that's part of my request and is that all of us, and, and hey, all of us could be very guilty of that. I mean, if someone wanted to say Christie said grandstanding, yes, Christie did say grandstanding. I'll own some of that stuff. But I think sometimes when it's implied or kind of overly, kind of overstated as a generalism, I think how I feel is people make up that that's, you know, A, B, C, D, and E. So I guess my request is if, you know, that we just be careful with some of those general statements because I think people start, even though you might've said five politicians in this room, I don't know what other politicians were in that room on Monday night. So it had to been-
I didn't say it was Monday night. I said, in this room, in the past seven months, I've heard five different politicians say that the general populace isn't capable of keeping up with the complexity of government. And that's a quote.
Well, and, and also that they weren't smart and, I mean, but I, I think that's my request.
They weren't able to comprehend the needs of government.
Because, you know, I know for myself, that was never said and I don't want that to be implied or people to make up that that's something said. So it's, it's just a request of mine. Um, I don't lose sleep over much, but I did on this one.
Christie, I tried not to get personal to point any fingers and I believe that if I didn't say it, I meant to say it also. It's, it's a national problem. I think I stated that.
You did say that, you did say that.
It's a national problem and I've even heard it here locally in local politics, that elected officials think they're somehow elitist and they have more knowledge, more perception. They need to be able to tell the people what the people wants instead of listening to what the people want. And that is my base mission, is to remind everybody that we work for the people and we don't get to pick and choose what we think the people need or want.
And stating it that way.
We have to do our best to, 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 that's what I tried to say. When it comes, when it comes to under, to following, well, it just when it comes-
No, it's not what he said.
When it comes to, uh, trying to strive to follow the will of people, we have to work very hard at that. And sometimes we have very clear indications with elections and sometimes that's why I understand we have wiggle room, because we have to go out and poll the people as best as we can. And I'm just trying to remind everybody and it's, like I said, it's a national problem that-
I, I agree, I agree.
That we are not telling the people what to do, the people are telling us what to do.
Yeah, and, and I agree.
And that's the way it's supposed to work.
And I, I agree with that a hundred percent and I just would be mindful with, you know, how other, how certain statements might be interpreted. And that was just my request.
I don't have any reports, but there is something I would like to say. I'm extremely disappointed that we missed the boat on something. Um, we're, we're trying really hard to make 38th Avenue walkable and a people-friendly place. And it was my understanding that when Incarnation was to be built, since there is a right-of-way that goes directly from 38th to Incarnation, that we were going to make sure that the design at, in, at Incarnation allowed people to walk to 38th. And I, I drove by there today and, um, you know, buildings are built directly in the path of the walk. So I, I think we just really missed the boat on that. And I, I would like to know if it's because in our code, we don't have the right tools or, uh, did the builder not do what we expected him to do or did we just not demand that that be done? And I, my memory is that when that was originally discussed, um, one of the aspects that was discussed is that the walkway was to be used to, uh, connect to 38th.
Yeah, that's my understanding that, that, um, has to happen. That's part of the deal and it just, it's not done yet. Um, the, um, project's not, um, really fully completed. They're still constructing some of the, the units. But, um, I will, I, I thought, didn't you and Ken talk about this recently? Did he say something different or?
Did we talk, did, I talked to Ken about that?
Yeah, I thought he had provided a response to say that, yes, that they do, they are required, it's just not done yet.
Yeah, but I, I drove by there today and as far as I can see, there's no way to, to get to that path. And it's, there's certainly no way for somebody from the community to see that they have to walk across the parking lot, um, to get to that path.
My understanding, there's, they're required to put a connection to 38th. I will, um, research that and we'll send an email to all the councils so everybody has the same information.
I would, I would really appreciate that. And I think we should take every opportunity we possibly can to connect Namburghs to 38th.
Um, just, just came up, um, something that I wish we'd kinda keep an eye on and I guess Mr. Brink's gone already, but as we do these other improvement projects, we are not a self or all-inclusive city. In other words, we get a lot of services from others, the water, the sewer, what have you. And I think we need to be mindful that we may be putting some undue burdens, uh, on those, uh, organizations. Unintentionally maybe, but I'm not sure where that all falls out and I'll be having some meetings with some folks and I'll get with you, Patrick. But just as we're talking about these taxes and utility fees and all that, just remember that it's not just the city, but we have sewer, water, gas, everybody that may wanna come back and charge our custom, our citizens in order to keep up with our improvements.
No, it's a fair statement, however, for every one, everything that we see up there and, and I know you've, you've seen this, every service agency is consulted on those, on those things. So they have an op, they have an opportunity to talk about to the extent that they can serve or cannot serve. It's part of, I mean, it's part of the process. I assume that means there's, there's dialogue at times if, if there is a problem. Uh, oftentimes, and I don't think there is, but I, I think that dialogue is presented as part of any new development. Can it be, can it be served by Consolidated Water, by whoever's in that area? All, every, every single one of them has to be contacted.
Yeah, if that, is that what you're speaking to, Mr. Matthews?
Well, yeah, as, as far as for relocation of their facilities, when we do, when we do an improvement project, I want everyone to keep in mind that it's not just our costs. They may have, they, uh, they may incur several million dollars worth of expenses.
Yep.
And where does that get paid for?
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, Mr. Pond is right. Um, there's a referral process that all these entities are contacted. Um, they're, they sit, they sit down with staff and, or look at the plans and, and let us know. Um, I think a good example of where we, we did work with, um, one of the districts, I don't know exactly which one, it's one of the sewer water for the Dowd Overlook Project, um, on West 38th Avenue, the, the 52, single family. Is that Dowd, that's not Dowd, is that Dowd, um, Fireside at Apple, Apple Wood. There was, um, some additional, um, I think there needed to be a, an upgrade of a sewer line, um, and the city actually did contribute, um, to a portion of that and the developer did too. So, um, not, not saying that some of these entities aren't impacted, um, but, um, that is part of the, the discussion and review.
I'm, I'm sure we are. That was because of our general discussion on having fees on, like, stormwater fees or fees on this. I was just trying to remind the rest of the council that there's a bigger piece of that picture than what Mr. Brink will bring to the table as far as his wants and needs for upgrading infrastructure. And we need to coordinate with them also. And I, I don't know, I know we talked to them.
That's always part of the package, is all of those. Ms. Wooden, did you have anything you wanted to add to tonight?
Yes. I think I echo Christie's thoughts when I say I'm, I was extremely disappointed that we did not have a retreat this past weekend. Um, and the fact that it was scuttled at 4:45 on a Friday afternoon before the morning we were supposed to be there. Um, I looked up and I looked up the, the notes here and it says that, um, you know, I see the 72 hours and I saw Jerry Doll's memo where he, he went through the, the state and the, uh, the other requirements for notice. And I understand we have somewhat of a confusion here as to what type of meeting this truly was and what kind of notice should have been given. But I am extremely upset that 10, 12 people's schedules were just scuttled and now we're gonna go through and we're gonna reschedule it. And it took months for us to get the facilitator, to get everybody's calendar together and, and it's a big deal that this was canceled. I just would like the public to know that we did have a good agenda set up and that the agenda was for the purpose of helping city council discuss and talk about how we're gonna work together going forward. And, um, part of the agenda was governance and the role of city council and that each member was going to discuss their views of council and, um, how we should engage in discussions and make decisions. Advocacy by council members, when and where, the role of public input, technical advice and studies, staff recommendations and individual council member views in council decision-making. And, I mean, I could go through this whole agenda, but the whole point of the day was for us to discuss with the facilitator effective ways for us to work together. And I very much hope that we can reschedule this soon and that we can have these discussions because I think it's very important and I'm very disappointed this was canceled at the very last minute. And I would say I, I agree with you a hundred percent on some of the things you said just recently about us listening to our citizens and what role we take. And I would also say that it, if, it applies to all of us, not just some of us, but it applies to all of us.
That wasn't the least bit divisive, was it? Incidentally, it wasn't scuttled and the reason it came up at 4:45 was because that's just when it was noticed. And we were breaking the rules by meeting without following procedure. So I brought it up, said, here's the issue, please advise. If you call that an intentional scuttling, then go ahead. I didn't bring it up three weeks ago or five weeks ago because I had no idea that our notice would not be posted correctly and apparently our notices have not been posted correctly for some time now. But it was against the open meeting rules and I brought it to our attention and the result was it was canceled. If you don't like it, I'm sorry.
I think-
I think we should get an answer as to why it wasn't posted.
Well, I'd, I'd like to maybe address this a little bit. I, I think the lesson to learn, learn from this is that our council rules need to be, um, rewritten. Um, there's a lot of confusion. Um, as you saw in Mr. Doll's email, uh, state statute says 24-hour notice, uh, city charter says 24-hour notice. Um, our council rules, um, don't specify what notice needs to be given for a special meeting, a regular meeting, an executive session or a study session. Um, in my mind, the, uh, council retreat was a special meeting, um, which, um, since the council rules don't specify noticing requirements, you go back to the city charter, which is 24 hours. There is a section in the council rules that does talk about informal meetings, which I understand why, um, there, there's disagreement, I think, even with our city attorney. And I, we had talked to him today, it's like, was the retreat an informal meeting or a special meeting? And I think out of, out of caution, since there was some folks who disagreed with, with the posting requirements, we, at the very last minute, we didn't have much time to make a decision. We decided out of, out of caution, let's, let's cancel it. Um, but lesson learned, I think council rules need to be fixed. Um, there's too much confusion on, um, what's a, what's an informal meeting and what's a special meeting. Um, and there's too much conflict with the city charter and state statutes. So, um, I think that's what happened.
I'd like to point out that the special meeting that Mr. Matthews requested only got 24 hours' notice and did not get 72 hours' notice and nobody else scuttled it.
We made sure the notice was three days. So you'd better review your facts. Now, if you wanna, guys wanna, wanna keep putting shots across my bow, I guarantee you, I'll shoot back. If you won't, if you wanna stop being divisive, then this is a good time to be quiet right now.
I guess, I guess when I hear you make some of the statements that you made earlier, um, I feel an implication that they aren't, that they're addressed to others in this room.
I'm letting this all go on, because some of this, this was what should have been discussed at the council retreat, and kind of get some understanding going among each other. We either need to discontinue it tonight, or go ahead and form the council retreat, and let's get it worked out. Not that it's not open to the public, but this is not really was planned for a meeting tonight.
Well, I don't think it's the venue, but if I didn't start it.
If I can just add, this is appalling to me. I'll tell you why. First, I appreciate Larry discovering that we didn't give a 72-hour notice. Had I wanted to deal with an issue from the public stating, you know what, it was a public meeting, we weren't aware, and had a whole other issue on that aspect, that wouldn't have been good either. Secondly, it states right here, I mean, clearly, if there's five or more council members, "may attend an informal meeting held for the purpose of acquiring information and discussion topics, provided that public notice of the meeting is posted on the location establishing for posting for all Wheat Ridge meetings at least 72 hours prior to the meeting." So I don't know that, how in that statement Larry did anything incorrect or wrong, or was trying to imply anything. And as far as implicating, implying anything on anybody, as Christie, you were talking to, or talking about before, grandstanding, listen, I've been at the wrath of each and every one of you doing that to me many times. So if we all want to change the behavior altogether, and you wish for everyone to change the behavior, then let's change it. And that should start...
That's my request.
That should start now with everybody.
Right. That was my request.
Directly, or indirectly, whether it's on social media, whether it's...
I agree.
Anywhere.
And that was my request, and that's why I said, I'm using that example, but it's something we all have to do.
Yes, and that I would appreciate.
Yeah, not each and every one, but that's fine. The, and I think this simply is, we'll get this scheduled, I don't know when. It is hard. I don't know when. It may be a while, and that's fine. We'll deal with it. Larry, it was 24 hours' notice for the special meeting. I've got your email right here. And that's fine. That's the, that was the, that's the rule for a special meeting. And this is a gray area, and that's why it's different. So just to clear, just to correct you, and I've got your email right here, it was the required 24 hours' notice. That is the right notice for a special meeting, so that's fine, I believe, right? I mean, that's... Yeah, we have two, we have multiple definitions that are confusing the issue.
Again, that's the problem, as Monica.
Exactly. So clearly, and just goes back to a point of business, and I apologize, because we tried to get this on, and then we tried to do it by, we tried to do it digitally because we lost our place because of a snowstorm. We were supposed to talk about the council rules, and we need to bring that back, and we can clean this up.
That was something that occurred to me now, that we missed our council rule meeting with the snowstorm, because for myself, I would, I wouldn't, I would like to even make things more stringent as far as public notice, and that would be the perfect venue to do that.
That's fine. So we'll talk about how to get that back on the agenda, which will allow us, obviously, to open it up and look at all of the council rules, and anything, maybe there's other things that we should look at, and, but certainly this one too. And we'll clean it up, and we'll, you know, we'll move forward, and it's fine. And, you know, I think it was, it was a fair request, and it's a disappointment all in the same time.
There was just no intent to scuttle something.
Yeah, and I didn't, I hope you didn't think I implied that. There's confusion in the rules, for sure, and they need to be cleaned up.
Ms. Hoppy?
First off, I'd like to apologize for being tardy tonight. I had an emergency that I needed to deal with. Second off, I firmly believe that every person is responsible for their own person and their own behavior. And as a member of the city council, I can make the promise that I will, at every possible moment, attempt to be the most respectful disagreeer that I can be. Disagreeing is okay. It's the way it's done. And I think that name-calling, I think that calling out, I think that finger-pointing, things like that are unprofessional. And I think that it's unfortunate for our citizens to have to bear witness to that. I think if somebody has, I would ask that if somebody has a problem with me, rather than waiting to be on the dais and point a finger at me or call me out, please call me ahead of time or after, or just please address it with me. And again, I will attempt to be the absolute most respectful disagreeer that I can be, and that's my promise to this council. And I think that every person is, can only be responsible for themselves, and you can only be responsible for, you can't be responsible for the way somebody responds to you. You can be responsible for the way you respond to them. And I feel like that is a way that we can hopefully professionally maintain our behaviors on the dais.
Can we apply that to Facebook as well? It is for you. Thank you. Did you have something else, anything else? I believe that the meeting is adjourned.